Okay, we'll call the meeting to order and stand for the singing of Oh Canada.
Oh Canada, our home and native land. True patriot love in all life's sunshine and. With glowing hearts we see the rise of the true north strong and free. From far and wide, oh Canada, we stand on guard for thee. God keeper and glorious and free. Oh Canada, we stand on guard for thee. Oh Canada, we stand on guard for thee.
Okay, record of attendance. Lynda, you're good. Counselor Hood, do you want to do for Counselor Dennis there? I know you've been.
Thank you, your worship. I request that council approve the absence of Counselor Dennis, who is completing today, I understand, her chemo, but has two more weeks of radiation. And it's, I submit, a justifiable reason not to be here, and I ask that council excuse her.
Okay, moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Questions have been called. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, contrary? Motion carried. Counselor Hood, can you just put that off? Thank you. Okay, attendance, declarations of conflict of interest, anyone? We can do that as we go. An introduction of volunteer fire department officials. Welcome, chief. And crew.
I've been trying to do this for about, well, I've been here three years, and I've been trying to do it for three years. The idea is to get the leadership in the department together all at once, introduce them, so you guys can meet them, see their faces, and know what they do, and also to understand how large the fire department's becoming. We actually have three different entities in the department. We have the department itself with the full-time members, and we have an association that's run by a president and a vice president. We have them here tonight. And we have two deputy chiefs who are volunteers who help run the department, too. So having all those groups together to run the department, if we didn't have them, we wouldn't be able to do what we're doing. So that's why I'm introducing them tonight. We do have another part of the department, which is called support. We only have one support member right now, who basically does things for us, that, well, she's got some skill sets. I don't, that's for sure. And she helps us out that way, too, but she's not here tonight. We also don't have the auxiliary here tonight, but I will bring them at a future date. So I'm going to introduce them. I'll bring them up. Come on up, guys. And hopefully I can stand right here in front of the board here, guys. And I'll start from the closest to me and work my way over, and then everybody can say hello. Stuart DeVoe, he's the vice president of the association. He's been on the association many, many years. Jason George, he's the president of the association. He's a new president, just started this year, or actually last year, right? Yeah, okay. Then we've got John Leveque, he's a deputy chief with the department. And Mike DeVoe, he's also a deputy chief. These guys basically are at the top of the volunteers and also at the top of the fire department itself for operations and stuff. And that's why I brought them, so I'd like yous to meet them and say hello, or if you want to. And that's that. I wanted to introduce them.
Any questions for them? How are you liking it?
I don't know.
Go ahead.
Pretty hard to introduce Stuart to me, since we've only known each other 58 years.
Yeah, right.
Across the street, I spent more time at his house than I did at mine. But just maybe one comment, your worship, on the excellent job that Stuart does, representing the fire department in the Tri-County Vanguard, now Tri-County Vanguard anyways. Stuart, you do an excellent job. Maybe you should have thought of being a writer as a career, because I think anything that has anything to do with the fire department that's in there is comprehensive, and I think you do a really good job putting the word out on what the fire department does, just besides saving the deck out there in Pembroke today. You do a multitude of other things. So thank you, Jase, I bow to Jason, Johnny, and Mike plowed me out a couple times this winter. Not with the fire truck, not with the fire truck. But you guys do a great job. Thank you very much.
Thanks, guys.
Putting some faces on the leadership of the department is very important, I think. Plus, when we're doing it, we're going to do some get-togethers at the fire department this year. And once we do those get-togethers, we'll be able to actually specifically talk with each one of them and ask them questions as much as you want. A couple of the ideas is a family fun day. Jason probably could talk, you want to talk about that? Jason, would you like me to?
Somebody take, somebody take, somebody take, you can't use that language in the council chamber, but use the microphone. Unless you want to pray first.
So the family fun day is started approximately five years ago. Darren, the past president Darren, and Matt Rhino, they started it, and we've kind of carried it over. And it's a chance for all the departments within the tri-counties, and this year we're trying to spread out to Digby and Shelburne. Most of the departments that we've had are within our paging district. Now we're reaching out to, we're trying to reach out beyond that. Tri-county's being Digby, Armith, and Shelburne. And we have had some responses that are sounding kind of positive. It's an opportunity for all the departments to come together as one. It's an opportunity for the public to come out and meet the volunteers, not only of our department, but of others. See some of our equipment, see how things are operated, and get the feel of things. And hopefully, for those who are interested, we can recruit them, not only in our department, but in the county departments as well.
They're loving it. Like, I think the firefighters are more excited than the kids. Seriously.
You're right.
Yeah.
Stuart, what's the farthest page going that way? What's the farthest page going that way?
Chief can correct me if I'm wrong, but Mettigan to Sable River, the paging district. Oh, do we do Shelburne? Yeah, we do Shelburne now, so Mettigan to Shelburne.
Okay. Good staff. Wow.
And just a little footnote, we do have a dunking booth, so we are looking for volunteers.
Well, we usually make a motion for new counselors to.
Initiation, initiation. All the money's raised, all the money's raised going to the firefighters' museum. So it's all for a good cause.
Your worship, the dunking booth, they had somebody taking care of me, and I think Stuart was there. And somebody dunked me, and I wasn't paying quite a bit, I wasn't paying attention. And I went over backwards, and I hit my head and turned myself upside down. And I was trying to get over to the bottom of the tank, and by the time I come up, the kid was over there looking for the balls over somewhere else, and I was, I was, it wasn't pretty. But it might have got me a couple extra votes, I don't know.
Couple extra bucks for the, for the fire department. That's always good news. I did it the first year. I said, that's no war for me. I think I'm the most anxious person sitting on that thing, waiting for somebody to do it.
Okay, thank you very much for coming in, guys. Really, really appreciate it.
Yeah, we do, we really appreciate it. Now, you can, you can, you're free to stay, you're free to leave.
I think we got the pages we want to go walk in two more minutes.
I just, sometimes people come, and then they feel like they have to sit there the whole evening. But I'll tell you, you should, because this stuff is riveting. That's right. Especially when Wade gets going. Cliff might even tell a story tonight. I mean, life is good at this table. Oh, my goodness. Oh, my heavens, help us. So we're looking for, right now, we got approval of agenda, additions or deletions. So I put, I can probably add these. I've got 12A, the spring workshop. Now, I'm going to ask this to the CAO. This is an ask for, did your buzzers go off, gentlemen? Thank you. The UNSM spring workshop, so it's an ask for funding, because we're going to host it next year. So does that, should we do that through committee of the whole next week? Probably because it's money. We've got plenty of time. So I'm going to take 12A off. I'm going to add the rest of them to, I'll just give you a heads-up. The request for weekly green card pickup. And presentations, are we doing presentations at council or committee of the whole? We'll just decide. I'll just add these things to the committee of the whole. No need to do them tonight.
A lot of times, you picked on the plane, didn't you?
I really did. I called Lynda Lynda six times, too. Okay, so anything else? Anybody want to? Go ahead, counselor.
Your worship, we had police advisory committee two days ago, and I do have something I would like to bring up arising from that meeting.
Okay.
I don't have my stats with me, but I do have something.
I'm going to put that as 12A. That'll be our first addition then.
Or reports, or wherever.
Oh, yes. Questions for committee chairs. Let's do that. Free police advisory. Anything else, anyone? Okay, motion to approve the agenda. Thank you, Counselor Barry. Seconded by deputy. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, contrary? Motion carried. Okay, approval of minutes. I have town council special meeting April 23rd, or April 13th. Moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Questions?
Questions been called. All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried. We had a public hearing April 13th.
So moved.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Questions, your worship.
Questions been called. All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried. Town council, April 13th, gee, April 13th was busy. Town council, April 13th.
So moved.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Questions been called. All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried. Town council special, April 20th.
So moved.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Questions been called. All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried. And committee of the whole, April 27th.
So moved.
By deputy, Counselor Barry. All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried. And now we have a presentation. Brenda Legrandeur, welcome back to Nova Scotia. You were missed, I have to say. We're glad to have you back.
Half as much as I miss being.
I'm sure.
Thank you very much for having me here this evening.
Diane, you can come up, so you can see the screen if you want. Just slip into one of those chairs, or wherever you're comfortable.
I know many of you here, but for the ones who don't know me, my name is Brenda Legrandeur, and I am the newest employee of the REN, the Western Regional Enterprise Network. And I'm the new manager of the new connector program. I wanted to tell you a little bit about me, but it does, does actually have to do with the connector program. Oops, it jumped, sorry. There's a slide missing, but that's okay. We're going to go right into this. First of all, I'd like to tell you that I worked here for the municipality of Argyle for eight years. I'm originally from Lower East Pubnico. It's really important to differentiate where I'm from. And my husband took an opportunity to move, to take a job in Ontario. So two and a half years ago, we moved to Ontario. He immediately walked into a network of both employers, he had a social network, he had a fishing buddy to go out with on the next Saturday. I stayed home, got the house all settled, and then started thinking about getting work. I did what everybody else did. I started looking online. I went to an employment center. I knew nobody, so I had nobody to reach out to. So I so very miss municipal world that I picked up the phone and I called the CAO of the municipality where I was living. So I introduced myself as his newest resident and taxpayer, and that I'd like to come in and have a chat with him if I could. I also used the excuse that I was interested in perhaps joining a committee, so that got me in the door. He told me he had about 15 minutes for me. I ended up talking with him for about an hour and a half. And we talked about, about him, about how he got there, how I got there. We mostly talked about what we were doing back here in Nova Scotia compared to there. It's not a whole lot of difference. But at the end of that meeting, he did something that I didn't ask him to do, but he said, you know what? There's somebody that you have to meet. And he right away sent an email to this lady named Cara Finn. She happened to be the manager of the local CFDC. Here, they're CBDCs, but in Ontario, they're called CFDCs. Community Futures Business Development Corps. And so I made an appointment to go see Cara Finn. So we did the same thing. We spoke for about a half an hour, just about projects that they were working on, projects I had worked on that were similar. At the end of the meeting, she said, you know what? She said, I have been posting a job next week. I really want you to apply. Well, I got that job, but it was a term job. So Cara then helped me find other jobs that I could apply for. I ended up getting a job with the Provincial Association of Community Futures Development Networks, with Cara as my reference. Now, would I have gotten those jobs if I'd applied for them? Maybe. But chances are, I got those jobs because of those connections that I made. I happened to reach out to the right people. What we're finding here in our area is that sometimes those connections aren't happening, for a lot of different reasons. Our program that we're talking about is called the Western REN Connector Program. But it actually started in Halifax. The Halifax Partnership started this program based on the fact that they were talking to employers who were saying, we're not seeing the talent that we're looking for applying for the jobs that we have. They were then working with immigrants who were saying, we have all the skills and qualifications. We're either not seeing the jobs posted, we are applying and not hear anything back, we're getting interviews and still not, not getting anywhere. So somewhere there was a disconnect. So what they realized was, is that these people were missing that basic business network, those connections in those communities. So the connector program was born. For, and so it started in 2009 in Halifax. And since 2009, they've had the success of matching over 800, what we call connectees, people looking for work, with connectors who are professionals or business leaders, that have resulted in 800-plus full-time jobs in the city for immigrants, who potentially might have left that city to look elsewhere for work. We've purchased the rights to that program, which includes their software. But we are the first program of its sort to be delivered in a rural setting. There are 25 other connector programs running all across Canada right now, very successfully and in very different ways. But always the base is that Halifax Connector Program. They've given us leeway to change it as we need to. I'm lucky to work with a great bunch of people who are out in the communities, who have listened to employers and have heard, heard the needs that are out there. So our REN Connector Program is actually going to connect immigrants, as well as new recent grads internationally, international grads. So students that are here, that are perhaps at Investe Santan, that are taking from away, professionally trained newcomers who are here either from other parts of Nova Scotia or other parts of Canada. Boomerangers, people that are from here, moved away, coming back, maybe reinventing themselves into something else. As well as underemployed people that are here. So skilled people that are here, that are doing work, that potentially, they still want to get to that next level in their, in their training. And we're matching them with business leaders here in Western Nova Scotia. And I probably don't have to say this, but Barrington has recently joined the REN. So the territory that we're talking about is from the municipality of Barrington to the municipality of Digby. Oh, it's just back, sorry. So this slide here, I'm sure you've all heard this before. It's not what you know, it's who you know. Well, I think it's both. And I think you have to have both to make it work really well. And I think in our rural areas, it often is even more important who you know. I know I have to give my ancestry down to four generations before people really understand who I am, who Grandpa era was, and who Grandmere was, and all of that sort of stuff. So it's really important. We also know that there is a hidden job market out there, because of that close-knit that we have. We have people who might have a job opening, and they'll just call the people that they know, who are in their network, and say, do you know somebody? You know, if you heard somebody. I talked to somebody today who was an employment resource person, and he said, we get calls like that all the time. They don't post the job. They call us and say, who are you seeing in front of you that potentially could send my way? So it's either to get them in the door quicker, but what happens with that is those jobs never get posted so that people who are potentially looking, whether they're inexperienced, because they're recent grads and they want to stay in this region, or they're like me, they're from away, or are away, and are looking to get back home. So this program is really to try to find the right contact. And we know it's a big challenge, like it is to try to find Waldo in this picture. So my job is to help define the right contact, and to help you find Waldo. That's why that big arrow is there.
Think our CAO just found Waldo.
Yeah. Oh, did you really? So it's a great way to help those people find the right connections, but it's also a great way to point out to potential employers in the area, the great talent that we do have here. Because, I'll give a really quick example. We were recruiting for a committee of the municipality of Argyle when I was working there, and a lady applied. And I did know her last name, and her credentials were amazing. And when she came on, we got to know her. They had recently moved to the community of Argyle. And her husband is a glaciologist. So there is a glaciologist. If a glacier ever comes into the harbor, I know who I'm going to call. I'm going to call Simon. But other than that, you just never know who's living in our communities. Not that Simon's looking for work or anything, but anyway. So how does this work? How does the program work? The connectee, the newcomer, recent grad, I meet with them. I found out what their needs are, what their goals are, what their experience is. And I make sure that they are employment-ready, full-time employment-ready, which means they're working, they're, sorry, they're living here already. If they're an international student or an immigrant, that they have a valid permit to work in the area. All of those things, we work with them to make sure that their resumes are up to, I don't, I send them to our referral partners and make sure that they're all ready to go. Then I match them with one local connector. A connector can be a person such as yourselves, who are very involved in the community. Doesn't mean that you are an employer as such. You're just one of those people who knows a lot of people. You're the kind of person that will say, I know who you should be talking to, just like, you know, the CAO did for me. Those are the kind of people that we're looking for as connectors. Next comes the connection. So the connector and the connectee meet up for an informal, can be 30 minutes over a cup of coffee. And it's a conversation, not an interview. So it's really about exactly what I did. This is me, this is you, what's it like around here? If I wanted your job, what do I have to do? And there's always feedback coming back to me. So if that person is deemed not ready by the connector, we get that feedback back, and we work again with the connectee to kind of get them ready. The end goal would be, the most amazing thing would be what happened to me. That out of those first couple of connections, that somebody gets offered a job. The Halifax Partnership said that they've got some, some really amazing things that happened that they didn't really think of. That, you know, six months down the road, somebody that was in the program initially said, you know what? I didn't get a job from those first ones, but I got the confidence to go out and apply for more jobs. Or I was stronger at my interviews, and that's what got me to the position that I got. So at the end of the day, it might not have been those initial connections, but that initial conversation is really so, so, so important. And the only thing the connector is asked to do, the person that, the businessperson, is that you give the contact information of three people in your network. So I'm going to date myself here. If anybody remembers the Faberge Organics commercial?
You tell two people?
And you told two friends. Yeah, so that's basically how this works. If every connector gives three referrals to three other people, they potentially can have a network as large as, as we have a community, basically. I ended up going to a biz after biz. It was a Chamber of Commerce dinner. And just walking in there and being able to recognize six people, like that was a huge thing when you don't know anybody. So the goal of our program, we're a one-year pilot, as is the Cape Breton Partnership, is to sign up 50 connectees, and the phone is starting to ring a lot, so which is very, very good. And I've already been in contact with the university and NSCC. And 50 connectors, I'm told that we get a lot more connectors volunteering than we actually get connectees. I'm hoping that's going to happen, too. And that one in three of those people that we connect find employment, full-time employment in our area. So how can you help consider becoming a connector? If you are interested, I have left a brochure that has my business card in there. It's not just about the role that you have sitting here today. It's your personal life, your social life. There was an example of a photographer who wanted to be a connector, and they were told, well, there are not a whole lot of people looking for full-time work as photographers here. He says, oh, no, my wife is a banker. And he said, I golf with bankers every weekend. I know the financial industry in this town inside and out. So those connections are as important socially as they are. And again, referring connectees. If you have a niece who's just graduated looking for work, whatever that might be, refer them to me as well. I'd be more than happy to work with them. And that's my whole presentation. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Excellent program. Excellent. Yeah. Any questions for Brenda? And anybody that wants to be a connector, by all means.
Thank you very much.
Hold you. Thank you very much for the work you're doing.
Thanks.
And it will make a difference.
I think it will, too. People are very excited. I was told by somebody at the university that people hear all the time as students, we want you to stay, stay here, there's good opportunities here, but this is the first path they've kind of seen towards it.
Yeah, that's very true.
Very hopeful.
A lot of, a lot of employers that are saying, like, we need these skills, but we can't find them.
Yep. I went to a job there and had an eye-opener. Wow.
Did you go to our job fair at NSCC?
I was on the job two days, I think.
Okay. A pile of people went through that, and so people are still saying, I can't find employment. It's there.
Yeah, it is.
It's there.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Brenda.
Brenda?
Connector. Good. Oh, I don't know. Down, I don't know. It's not even on here. Okay. Okay, so we're on business. Do we want to deal with the budget now? Okay. Okay, so I'll do a little bit of explaining. I'll probably pass it to Jeff as well. So basically, the motion would be that council accept a budget with revenues in the amount of $17,512,882, and expenses of $17,425,359, for an overall surplus of $87,523 for its general operations for the year ended March 31st, 2018. The following rates are included: residential, $1.64 per 100 of assessment; commercial property is $4.26 per 100 of assessment; resource general, $1.64, and farmland, $2.16 per acre. The residential garbage collection is, and processing is $180 per dwelling unit, up to four. After that, it's deemed commercial at the owner's expense. The interest rate is 14% per annum on delinquent accounts. That hasn't changed, has it? Nope, that's the same. And that council, the depreciation, that council approves a transfer to the capital fund in the amount of $1,825,500. And the CAO will implement the inherent recommendations, administer and control the operating budget, and report to council as appropriate. There's your motion. Moved by Counselor Barry.
Seconded for discussion, your worship.
Seconded by deputy, and.
Jeff doesn't give us the overview, too.
Discussion. Well, I can, I.
Let me start.
Yeah, you go ahead, because I can go through some of this, too. Go ahead.
So, your worship, the budget is, as you've indicated, a modest surplus. I think that's equivalent to almost a half of 1% of our budget as a surplus, which is. which is probably the biggest cushion we've had in a while, and appropriately so. If you recall back to our municipal indicators, in the last five years, we've had two deficits. Those have been, you know, marginal deficits, but it's because we've budgeted surpluses in the area of $6,000 or so. And that really, it's hit and miss whether, which side of the lawn you're going to land when you're budgeting that narrowly on a $17 million budget. So the, maybe I can address the general budget. Is a stay-the-course budget. You know, a lot of good things have been introduced by council over the last few years. I think there's some good programs, like the facade program and so on, that have been introduced and well-accepted by the community. And those will continue. It was a definite challenge this year, putting the budget together, because we have squeezed the budget very tightly over almost 10 consecutive years now. And there really is no more blood left in the turnip. So the budget package will continue to provide services and restore infrastructure in a way that is appropriate, I guess prudent. The only caution or caveat I'd put to that is that we have squeezed so tightly, I'm afraid that in the area of maintenance, that we've probably squeezed a bit, a bit too tight. And so that will be probably something that we'll talk about in detail as we get into next year's budget. We have continued to fund our, fully fund our depreciation, which means that we replenish our capital assets at the same rate or greater than we use them up. So if a street is expected to have a 20-year life for its asphalt, we depreciate that on a straight-line basis, based on cost. And we are putting that money back into capital assets every year. And we've done so for 11 consecutive years. And we are the only municipality in Nova Scotia that does that. And so that is included within our tax rates. And so I think that's something you should be very proud of. And I think it's a irresponsible thing to do. I'll stop talking there, your worship, and any questions, comments, observations?
Yeah, questions and comments? Go ahead.
Yeah, just a couple of quick ones, your worship. I know Jeff and Jerry and all the department heads did a great job in presenting and preparing the budget this year. But I know we're not having too many viewers tonight. And Lady Dyce, both the only, and Chief are both the only people that will be hearing this. And of course, they'll hear it tomorrow morning on. The Wave, 95.5, CJLS. Is it The Wave? No, you haven't... Why 95? I was there for the egg salad sandwiches and the cake butt. Some of the things you've got to look, some of the things you've got to look at, and some of the things that we've incorporated, that we've stayed the same with flat assessments over the last several years, is some of the events that we've done from the, like, the next coming up Communities in Bloom that we're putting money away, one of the largest conventions we're ever going to have, coming right across the world. Things we do with tours from Tu'ashteh. We're going to have wharfs, terminal upgrades. We're going to do the demolition of the Dominion Textiles property, which is a million dollars. Park improvements with the dog park and the Doug Malonson Park. The trails, the Maud Lewis Trail, the Broadbrook Connector Trail has been incorporated. Roads and sidewalks, of course, your worship. And then we're going to have issues with the YMCA upgrades, the YARK, the Mariner Center is going to be coming onboard. Plus, to download what the province has done with us, with schools. You know, Milton Centertown, the high school was costing us probably, Jeff, in the vicinity of $125,000 a year, just to maintain the high school, right? So they gave us a school, but they didn't give us any fiscal resources to keep that school going. So we, that fell on the backs of the taxpayers. Plus, there's going to be new opportunities for infrastructure coming over the next couple of years through the province and through the federal government. So we're going to have to have money. It's good to say we have infrastructure money coming from Ottawa, from Halifax. But guess what? We need money to match up with their money. So if we don't have the money, we can't take care of those opportunities. Plus, one of the other things is, not in this year's budget so much, but in next year's budget, there's going to be a real challenge with the tax reduction requests that we have from places like the Shift House and the library and the museum and the Sports Hall of Fame and the, you know, the gun club, the SOCS Gun Club. So all those things are things that people really don't see. Things that we provide, services that we provide. So Jerry, like Jeff, I'd like to tell Jerry, you did a great job. You did a great job. And for us to hold the rates the way they are for this long is very good, especially with the flat assessments. And...
How many years has it been?
I think it's been six or, I think, seven, maybe? Six or seven?
Seven years?
The effective rate. It's 11 years? Yeah.
That we've held the rate?
Yeah, so I think that's pretty good. Plus, in the meantime, I think five or six years ago, we had the cancellation of the MOU with the former NDP government, which costs us, I think, in the range of $300,000 to $390,000 a year for the last five or six years, which is $2 million that we could have put on roads, sidewalks, infrastructure, some of the other projects I named. So anyways, that was my grandstand today, Wade. And I know nobody was watching, but just to put it a little extra in context, your worship. Yeah?
No.
That was zero last time, right? It's good stuff.
So basically, this year's budget is consistent with previous years in that it seeks to complete a phase out of the tax rates paying for sewer service. So basically, the sewer services weren't paying for themselves. Correct me anytime I'm wrong here. The sewer services weren't paying for themselves. So what we're doing is a phase out of that, because we were taking money from the other budget and putting it towards that. And we don't want to have to do that anymore. So effective with the passing of this budget, sewer rates cover the cost of operating the sewer system, which is excellent. This will be done through a 5-cent reduction in the residential tax rate and a 7-cent reduction in the commercial tax rate. A corresponding increase will be applied to the sewer rates. So basically, it's in here. Council's putting back 2 cents on both the residential and commercial tax rates. So for a property valued at $100,000, it's an additional $1.65 a month, $20, $20 a year. But it makes a big difference in our bottom line, $87,000 surplus, which we will probably need by the end of the month, because we've already, I think we've already taken a little bit out of it. So it goes really fast. But the 2 cents to the tax rate is very, very minimum. Over the past 10 years, 11 cents have been taken off the residential tax rate in order to moderate the taxes paid by our residents, because times have been difficult for quite some years. And what the deputy mayor was saying, you know, we've been through a lot over the last few years. And we're really excited about what's upcoming. We're, I mean, I think we all at this table can say, "This is an excellent budget." We're excited about it. And really excited about everything that we can cover in this. And what was it, CAO, that you said? If we do our capital, if we do everything in our capital, it's around $8 million? And we didn't have to borrow one penny for that?
And the budget will be online, Jeff, right?
So when it's approved, we'll put the budget online. And the details will be there of the capital budget as well as the operating budget. And your worship, you're right, we are not adding debt. We carry about 3.3% of our revenues go to debt servicing. And that is low among towns, certainly well below the average.
Do we retire anything this year or the next couple of years? Jeff, do you know that, just off the top of your head?
In 2018-19, which is next year, two loans will be retired. Those were for the Public Works Building. And there was a water treatment loan. So that would be a water utility loan. Had borrowed from the landfill reserve, you'd remember that. So we do still have two outstanding loans that will carry on for a few more years. One is on Charles Crosby Drive. And what we did there is we, that project is being paid for by gas tax. But we had to borrow the money because of the way the gas tax was phased in. So that debt servicing is actually covered by a federal transfer. The only other loan that we have on the books is a $2.5 million loan that we took out for a stormwater separation project. That will be retired in 23-24. And the balance remaining on that?
When?
23-24.
2023.
24.
Six years.
Sorry.
Six years or 300 and...
Right, sorry.
300 years.
So there's one...
Jim will be here to see it, right, Jim?
Yeah, he's here, yeah.
Yeah.
There's just...
I second a lot of corporates picking things apart.
There's just under 1.2 million left outstanding on that loan today. And so I wrote...
Was that project gone, Jeff?
We did a stormwater separation project related to, was, it involved Tooker? Tooker, Southeast Street? Yeah, and it brought the stormwater down to an outfall at the harbor and separated from the sanitary sewer.
When was that? That was long ago.
That was long.
Yeah, that's pushing 10 years.
Wow.
Yeah.
Man, time flies. Go ahead.
I just want to congratulate and thank my fellow councillors for supporting the budget. And it looks very promising. I wanted to ask a question, Jeff. The motion, is that to approve both the operations and the capital budget? Or do we need two motions?
Most appropriately, would be two motions. So the first motion that is on the floor now approves the operating budget, the tax levy, the rates. The capital budget is the detail of what happens to the 1.8 million that's being transferred into the capital fund, as well as our other capital resources. So two motions.
Okay.
So the motion will be to approve this.
I understand.
That's on the floor.
So is this depreciate, is this 1.8 million in this budget, in this motion?
That's in this motion, yeah. That's the transfer to the capital fund. And then you make a second motion to approve the capital budget, which is how the capital fund is going to be used.
Okay, good. So councillor McLeod, did you want to make that motion?
It's on the floor now for the operations.
You made that.
And these two people...
That's right, these two made it.
And then I'll prepare to make a motion following that if it's appropriate.
So is there any more discussion, questions, anything? Anybody wants before we pass this part of the budget? We good? Questions been called? All those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried? Go ahead, councillor.
I'll move a motion to support the capital budget as presented by staff.
Second.
Good. Okay, moved, seconded by councillor Barry. Any discussion on that one? Questions been called? All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried? Good job, folks. Suppose Kevin's going to want to have a chat after. Okay, reports. Council Advisory Reports Committee of the Whole, April 27th. Deputy?
Thank you, your worship. I guess we've already done this, but I move that the budget be placed on the agenda of May 18th, meeting of the town council. And in the meantime, if any questions, they contact the Director of Finance. And if anyone still has unanswered questions at the May council meeting, the budget can be tabled until the next meeting of council.
We were that good, that we just took care of business before this one even came up. Okay, can I have a second, or?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried?
Your worship, I move that the Towne Yarmit contribute the amount of $178.83 if requested to the FCM Legal Defense Fund. It may be councillor Hood might have a word or two on that.
Thank you.
Federation of Canadian Municipalities, of which we're a member, takes an active role in retaining legal counsel to represent the federation and its members, who have important issues that rise up from time to time and eventually end up in Supreme Court of Canada. It's an important and worthwhile function that the FCM provides on our behalf. And it's a modest amount when it's spread out amongst the many members of the FCM. It's one of the examples of how the FCM actually serves individual municipal units. And there have been many, and sometimes landmark decisions in the Supreme Court of Canada that affect the rights of towns. We're not a constitutional government. We're a third order of government with, we're creatures of the provinces by statute. And we need an aggressive representative on our part. And I think it's entirely appropriate that we grant this modest amount towards the legal defense.
Very modest. Thank you, councillor.
Question?
Okay, questions been called? All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried?
Your worship, I move that correspondent from Francois Choquet, MP, request his support for his bill to amend the Supreme Court Act to require all Supreme Court judges to understand both official languages without the aid of an interpreter be received and placed on file.
I second it.
Moved and seconded? Go ahead. Were you going to say something? Careful. Go ahead.
I'm seconding the motion and I support it. I support tabling it wholeheartedly. I don't think the mover realizes that it would have an adverse effect in his own province, where competent, well-respected barristers who do not speak the English language would be likewise barred, as would competent, non-French-speaking solicitors in other parts of Canada. So this is a bilingual country. They have excellent, I've participated in a number of trials over the years where there's been interpreters, and we get by fine. And that's how our system works. That's how our bilingual system works. And I would not support, I support the motion to table it. Thank you for inviting me, Deputy Mayor.
Good, thank you. Questions been called? All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary?
Your worship, I move that the Towne Yarmit consult with the Department of Transportation Infrastructure Renewal when the resurfacing of Prospect Street rises to the top of our priority list for paving. Maybe you can explain just the overview on that one? We have a second here.
Second.
Yeah, thank you. So basically, I believe it was a letter from the municipality who were contacted, I think by residents of Prospect Street. And Prospect Street, is it half, it's hours on one side and it's, it's the municipalities on the other, so, which would fall under the Department of Transportation. So that's not on our priority list, so we will do that when...
When it rises to the top, yeah.
When it does. Thank you. So all those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried?
Your worship, I move that the Towne Yarmit request a tender or quote for the removal of the burned debris and remaining shed on the property located at 41 Argyle Street and apply the cost to the property tax. And I believe that was done the next day, wasn't it, CAO?
Okay, moved and seconded? Questions been called? All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried? Is that moved? Sorry, deputy. Is that stuff cleaned up?
Yeah.
Yeah, I haven't been by there.
It was the next day.
Okay, good. Okay, good.
Yeah.
Excellent.
I think it was that, yeah. I move, your worship, that Curtis Falls, Dick Stewart, Bob Newell, Phil LeBlanc, Tim Kaiser, Glenn Budgero and Derek Robertson be appointed to the Waterfront Development Corporation.
Moved and seconded? Any discussion? Questions been called? All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried?
Your worship, I move that Vera Sammy, John Ryan, Neil Rogers, Rod Rose and Madeline Dawes be appointed to the Planning Advisory Committee.
Moved and seconded? Any discussion? Questions been called? All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried?
Your worship, I move that Kevin Northup, Neil McKenzie and Del Budgero be appointed to the Yarmit Recreation Committee.
Kevin Northup?
Kevin Northup, yeah, a very valuable member.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried? Congratulations, Kevin.
He had to make sure that he... Yeah. He had to make sure he had enough votes, so he wasn't sure. He might have put the clippers to you.
Oh, my goodness.
Your worship, I move that Mike Randall, Matthew Trask and Linda Gallagher be appointed to the Mariner Center Management Board.
Moved and seconded? Any discussion? Questions been called? All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried. Do you want me to explain that? We don't have to, we're good. Okay, go ahead, deputy.
Yeah, and, uh, I move that Janice Sonia, Ed de Grabois, be appointed to the Yarmouth and Acadian Shores Tourism Association.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Question.
Questions been called? All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried.
Your worship, I move that Mary Anne Parnell, Michael Wilson, and Randy Sonia be appointed to the Heritage Advisory Committee. And with so many seconds, I just maybe a comment that, uh, yourself and Jeff can make on, just a couple of the names and-
I'll second it.
Yeah, and, and maybe you can give a comment, Jeff, that you noticed that Randy, and I think there's another name there, Mike Randall, live outside of town, but they are appointed to town committees, and we do have a, a reason for that, and if you can explain it yourself for the worship, your worship for that?
So, so the owner or the director of a company in the town of Yarmouth can sit on our committees?
Yes.
Okay, so we're good to go.
Thank you, your worship. I move that-
Yeah. What's that? Or if they own property, yes. We didn't vote on that.
Question, your worship.
Questions been called? All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried.
Your worship, I move that Dave Sallos, Barb Rodney, Fay Allen, Heather Hatfield, Angela Goodwin, David Warner, Carol McKinley, and Gil Derris be appointed to the Communities in Bloom Committee.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried. Wait, how are you, I'll ask you that later. Okay, committee of the whole, May sixteenth.
Think we've done some of this, your worship, but, uh, I move that the capital budget be approved as presented.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried.
Uh, your worship, I move that councillor Hood be appointed an interim member of the Planning Advisor Committee and the Industrial Commission, deputy mayor Mooney be appointed as an interim member of the Communities in Bloom Advisory Committee, and councillor McLeod be appointed as an interim member of the Emergency Measures Organisation, or the EMO.
Okay.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Question.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried.
Your worship, I move that the tax rate be increased by two cents after the sewer reduction, uh, sewer rate reduction is applied.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Question, your worship.
Questions been called? All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried. Good stuff. Okay, citizen advisory committees, planning advisory. Go ahead, councillor McLeod.
Your worship and fellow councillors, no report for the month of May, we'll be ready and armed for June.
Good stuff. Thank you. Reports for information, we've got a Communities in Bloom report, that's for information. Okay, questions for committee chairs? So let's, councillor Hood, do you wanna do police advisory now? That would be good. Go ahead.
So if your worship, please, the town has a police advisory committee, and, uh, I learned a little bit about how and why we have a committee. It's a, partially a citizen committee and, uh, citizen advisory, and it's partially, um, constructed with, uh, two council representatives, two citizen representatives, and we have police, uh, provincial employee, uh, the province appoints two, or one. So anyway, uh, we, we met, uh, the other day, there, we have regular meetings every three or four months, and, um, the, uh, current chief, uh, Staff Sergeant Lacroix, uh, resides. Um, he did provide us with some, uh, information that I might share with the public, uh, back in our previous, ah, I had this all set. Anyway, he gave us, uh, he, what he does is, he goes over our crime statistics, he goes over, um, other issues that are important to him. We had a discussion about, uh, the implications with the oncoming, uh, marijuana laws and so on, and, uh, obviously, their priority is not, uh, enforcing marijuana laws nowadays, because of where we are at. They, they are focused on more serious crime, crimes against property, crimes against persons. Uh, one issue arose in our meeting, and that's one I wanted to bring forward.
Great.
Uh, there is some talk and some material that we've received about a proposal in respect to the Trails Association, and, I mean, this has been before you before, but the, uh, whole idea of the ATVs using Water Street to assist with the Trails program. Uh, Staff Sergeant Lacroix, uh, requests that council, and any of us that discuss this, involve him, uh, to seek input, uh, about his concerns in relation to this, before we take any firm steps to approve or disapprove any such proposal. And I wanted to give, uh, a heads-up on that before things get too cemented in place. I think that he shared with us some significant concerns about liability and, well frankly, the desirability of entering into that. He's, um, it's one thing to have a four-wheel driver that's licensed on the Motor Vehicle Act and has a plate, and has insurance. But when you get kids going up and down the road, popping wheelies and so on, not a very, not a very attractive thing on Water Street, with, uh, the traffic we have to service, from the ferry, from, you know, all the rest. So, uh, it's not something that I think we should embark on lightly, unless we've already done it. So I, I, I get that out there now, because we heard it, we heard it very clearly at our committee, from Staff Sergeant Lacroix the other day. Thank you.
Thank you. So, so we may need to invite him in sooner than later.
I think, I think that would be the appropriate.
Okay, yeah, and, and we will do that, because it's, uh, it's moving. It's, it's moving. Yeah. Okay, good. Thank you, councillor. And, and councillor, uh, wait, I was just gonna ask you about the Communities in Bloom. We're going, we're, we're good on the conference and all that jazz?
Everything has started. It's a two-year process, it's very large. It's going to be a, a massive undertaking, which we're very excited about. It's going to be a very good, uh, very good symposium. It's going to bring in upwards of three hundred-plus, uh, delegates into the area for that period of time, and, uh, yes, we're, we're in the very beginning stages, just mapping out, um, mapping out budgeting, and, uh, we're going to soon be starting to put together, uh, core groups in order to, uh, bring the right people onboard to, uh, pull this off.
Good stuff. Thanks for taking on the chair of that.
Big job.
It's a big job. It's a big job. So we, um, I mean, not that this is a question for committee chairs, but, but just in general, um, the majority of us made it to the UNSM Conference, and, uh, because of the election that was called, um, I wanna say legally, they're not, uh, permitted to talk about certain things, so, uh, housing was taken off the agenda, for example, a couple of other things, Phil, I don't remember what, but, but we had, um, oh my goodness, the speakers were amazing that did come, and they did, uh, we had, the health authority showed up and gave us some really great numbers. Uh, who, who else was there? Do you remember?
Trade one.
The, and, yes, international and otherwise, uh, trade, there was one on trade. There was quite a number, but it's, it's, uh, it's in-
Innovations, encouraged.
Yeah, exactly, the innovations, it, it was really some great, great, great stuff. So this is all on the UNSM website. Sorry, I didn't see you like, go ahead.
Yeah, and plus, the other thing is, I, uh, and we had Brenda here earlier, with the REN, is, uh, I don't think people realize how far we're ahead of the pack on the REN thing. Like, we're up there, and you have a town the same size as Yarmouth, or just a touch bigger, Truro, where they haven't have, don't have anything in place.
Yeah.
Right? And we've been at it for a year, year and a half, close to two-
Full speed.
Full speed, and these guys are asking us, right, they're asking you, on the side, what, what can they do to build the partnerships to get it going? So, uh, we are ahead of the curve on this one.
We are. We do, we do pretty well. But anyway, the, um, the next thing coming up, so we just did UNSM, and then there's FCM, I think some, who's going to that? One, two, three? Okay, so that's good. So it's all professional development, right, and it's, uh, the networking and things you learn that you can bring back is just off the charts. I was telling Jeff today, I said, a trip to Ottawa, and there's no, in all honesty, I feel like, gee, there's no time, but he said, I'll, I'll go and-
Plus Parliament's in session, too, your worship, so it's a good opportunity to do some other networking.
Yeah, exactly. So it's all, uh, it's all good stuff. So any more questions for committee chairs? Anything? Anybody want to throw out there? We're good. Um, we took the additions off, so I understand. Looking for approval of invoices.
So moved?
Moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried. Date of next meeting? I think we'll just be getting back from you at FCM, June eighth, and it says property matter in camera. Do you wanna do that? Okay, so a motion to go in camera, folks?
So moved.
Okay, good. Um, Kevin, do you wanna talk to me first? By the time they get herded in-